Now, we will call the town council meeting of April 5th to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Ed, can you lead us tonight?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will start off with presentations and recognition. And tonight, we have one proclamation. And this, I believe, is our third proclamation for a resident who has turned 100 years old in the last four months, which is pretty impressive. So, our proclamation reads tonight. Whereas John Cannon was born in Hartford, Connecticut on May 1st, 1921, and lived in Frog Hollow with his seven siblings; and whereas John Cannon overcame many challenges in his youth, he lived through the Great Depression, survived rheumatic fever and dysuria along with his sister Teresa; and whereas John Cannon's first job was selling newspapers near the factories before school, and he was first to dive into the new pool at Pope Park before the dedication ceremony was over; and whereas John Cannon is a graduate of Hartford Public High School and worked as a runner at Royal Typewriter; and whereas John met his wife Bella at a dam, and the two were married shortly before John enlisted in the Coast Guard. He served primarily in California and Marblehead, Massachusetts, where he developed his fondness for fried whole-belly clams; and whereas, following his service to the United States, John and Bella returned to Connecticut and bought a home in West Hartford before moving to Simsbury; and whereas, John passed the civil service exam and was hired by the Simsbury postmaster to walk the very first route in Simsbury, making the transition from rural free delivery in town; and whereas, John Cannon, being an avid animal lover, made fast friends with a Springer Spaniel named Sanctity who would follow John on his route every day; and whereas, John Cannon's true devotion lies with his family, which includes two sons, five grandchildren, and eight great-grandchildren, and he enjoyed traveling for many years with Bella. As a resident of Farmington for six years, John Cannon now lives in Middle Woods of Farmington. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Farmington Town Council hereby proclaim May 1st, 2021, as John Cannon Day in the town of Farmington. And we will call upon our fellow residents to pay tribute to this special member of our community and wish him a very happy 100th birthday. Dated this 5th day of April, 2021, at Farmington, Connecticut, CJ Thomas, Chair, Farmington Town Council. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Now, we move on to our public hearing. Peter?
Legal notice, Thomas Farmington Public Hearing. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 5th, 2021, at 7:05 PM, online via Zoom webinar of the Town Council's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. View the Town Council's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 on the Town website. Comments can be sent to the Town Council until 12 noon on April 5th, 2021, and are accepted via email or by calling and leaving a voicemail. Please provide your name and address when emailing or calling stands for public comments. Calling comments are limited to five minutes. Please call the Town Manager's office with any questions. Date of Farmington, Connecticut, the 24th day of March 2 of 2021. Kathy Wannske, Town Manager.
So CJ, I think you are going to start?
I will start this. It is now 7:05. I wanted to wait until 7:05 since the call said to start. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on the Town Council's fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. The decisions the Town Council made pertaining to the budget were based on a number of factors: the Town's strategic plan, long-term financial forecast, and the current economic climate. Overall, our goal is to maintain excellent services while being fiscally responsible and proactively planning for the future needs of the town, needs such as the Farmington High School. Prior to this presentation, the budget has gone through a number of reviews and adjustments. In January, department requests began coming in to the Town Manager. At its January 12th, 2021 meeting, the Town Council set an expenditure target of no more than 3% increase for both the Town and Board of Education. This budget target is in line with our long-term financial forecast, the same forecast we referenced when discussing the Farmington High School building project. The Town Manager decreased her overall department requests by $1,149,943 to reduce the overall budget increase from 6.66% to a 2.99% prior to presenting to the council. The Board of Education forwarded their request of 4.3% increase, $3,012,353, on February 10th. A public hearing was held on the Town Manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan on February 23rd, 2021. A public hearing was held on the Town Manager's recommended operating budget on March 9th, 2021. The Town Council held workshop sessions on March 10th, March 11th, and March 13th to finalize their budget. The Town Council made the following changes to the Town Manager's budget. We reduced the Board of Education capital budget by $710,000. We reduced the Town capital budget by $370,000. We reduced the Board of Education operating budget by $700,000. We reduced the debt by $130,000, and we increased other property taxes by $25,000. The Town Council approved this budget unanimously at its March 13th, 2021 budget workshop meeting. These changes were incorporated to create the Town Council's proposed budget. Tonight is the public hearing on the Town Council's proposed budget. If the Town Council's proposed budget is approved tonight, the next step is follows. The approved budget becomes the Town Council recommended budget, which will be sent to the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting will be held on April 19th, 2021, 7 PM, in the FHS auditorium. The meeting will also be live on Zoom, but only those in attendance at the meeting in person at the high school will be able to provide public comment. We will be adhering to all COVID restrictions on masks and social distancing at that meeting. The annual town meeting adjourns to a referendum vote, which will be April 29th, 2021. As many of you remember, last year's budget process was modified by an executive order issued by Governor Lamont. There were explicit restrictions on holding an annual town meeting and budget referendum due to COVID-19. As a result, the Town Council set the budget and tax rate. At the May 12th, 2020 Town Council public meeting, due to both the economic hardship of our taxpayers and the unknown impact of the pandemic, the council adopted our fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, which had a zero tax increase. This year, the recommended general fund budget required a property tax rate of $28.81, which is up 0.84%, a 2.99% tax increase. In other words, for $100,000 assessed value, that is equal to $2,881 in taxes. These added costs for the average homeowner with a house assessed at $226,777 is $189.79. That is the added cost of the increase. You can see on your screen there the chart, which just shows the actual numbers, what I just said. Last year, the Town Council significantly reduced our capital spending. We chose this in an effort to limit the reductions to Town services while also avoiding a tax increase to our taxpayers. We understand that the primary focus of local government is maintaining the town's infrastructure, and last year's action was only a short-term solution. That is why this budget significantly increases our capital spending. A large focus has been placed on the Farmington High School building project. But it's important for the community to know that the Town Council and the Board of Education are committed to funding the infrastructure projects throughout town, specifically the project in the cafeteria code analysis and grounds survey completed by Friar Architect, commonly called Friar Report. This is something we will continue to do. The budget also includes three bonding questions, which will move important infrastructure projects forward. The first is $2 million for road reconstruction, which will enable the town to continue the town's repairs on roads and construction plans. Second, there is $1,284,000 for Irving A. Robbins Middle School cafeteria additions and renovations; and the third is $450,000 for a partial roof replacement at Noah Wallace. The two school projects are included in the Friar Report. The Town and Board of Education have been funding the K-9 long-term plan for many years, and I'm proud to say the progress we have made and our dedication to this continues. As many of you know, the Farmington High School Building Committee is preparing for an early June referendum. The committee is comprised of dedicated residents, elected officials, school administration, and town staff. The Building Committee has recommended to the Town Council a new high school, which is a comprehensive solution that will benefit our students and community alike. As a result of the long-term financial planning, ongoing retirement of existing bonded debt, and a deliberate effort by the Town Council to maintain a low mill rate, the town is well positioned to move forward to the new high school project. The Town Council fully supports this project. It is the right solution, and the timing is right. Farmington is a great town in which to live, work, play, and prosper. We remain well-positioned in terms of economic development, exceptional education, and providing high levels of service without substantially increasing taxes. Thank you. And now, I will turn it over to Kathy Wannske. Oh, wait a minute, I've got one. Okay. We've got Slide 7 up there, I think. Sorry about that, Anna. This year's come a challenge to us all. I'd like to thank all the employees of the town, the Board of Education for their hard working dedication. I'd also like to thank the volunteers and the elected officials who have stepped up to help us in these difficult times, and they've made them just a little less difficult. Finally, I'd like to thank all of you, the people of Farmington Union. You truly have stepped up. You followed the health guidelines, you supported local businesses, but most importantly, you've looked after your neighbors and those in need. More and more of our community is continuing to get vaccinated, and it does look like we can at least be a light at the end of the tunnel. So, continue on with what you have been doing, and hopefully, soon we'll be meeting in public. So, finally, I'd just like to say, this is a fiscally responsible budget. It follows our long-term financial plan, including the Farmington High School project. Funding for our other townwide needs are covered, and meeting the needs of both the town and the school system without overburdening the taxpayer is what we're looking to do. I ask the community to come out and vote and support this budget on April 29th, 2021. Now, I will turn the presentation to Kathy Wannske, our Town Manager, and Kathy Greeter, the School Superintendent, who will present details on their budget.
Thank you, CJ. Farmington Town Council and members of the public. I present for you a review of the Town Council's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. Along with the Town Council's budget targets, the Town's strategic plan, the Town's capital improvement policy, and our long-term financial forecast, were the policy guidelines at the forefront in formulating this budget. The budget building process focused on the following funding themes: maintaining current service level, fund mandated expenses, and increase current capital funding levels. I will now review the Town Council's proposed budget. The general fund budget includes the proposed spending for the town and the school system for debt service and for capital improvement. The proposed budget for Westwood Golf Course, the recreation fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included. The budget is broken down into three categories: expenditures, grand lists, and revenues, which are used to develop a tax rate. Expenditures. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 is $116,175,000, an increase of $4,166,280, or 3.72% above the current budget. Budget drivers. This year, we are faced with several high-cost issues that are driving up costs. At the same time, we have seen savings in some accounts that have helped offset those increases. Budget drivers include, but are not limited to, the funding requirements of the pension fund, the Police Accountability Act, and fully funding three positions that were only funded for half a year in the current budget. Budget savings. As mentioned, there are savings in other accounts that help offset the budget drivers. The health insurance account has seen a reduction due to favorable renewal terms, and several retirements over the past few years have reduced department-wide personnel costs since the town generally fills those vacant positions at a lower rate. Town operations. The Town Council's proposed town budget is $32,317,083, an increase of $938,846, or 2.99% above current expenditures. The general administration group of accounts has increased 9.1%. The public safety group of accounts has increased 1.96%. The public works group of accounts has increased 0.23%. Community and recreation has increased 3.79%, and the other group of accounts increased 0.79%. Highlights of the town budget include the following: the contribution to the library is $2,761,568, which is a 3% increase above current budget level. The custodian at the town hall is fully funded this year. Previously, the library funded about 25% of that position. The needs of the library and the town hall were too great to continue this arrangement. Ensuring compliance with the Police Accountability Bill has resulted in $105,000 added to the Police Department's budget. The Police Department includes $12,000 for racial diversity training at West Farms Mall. The highway and grounds operation account shows funding for four seasonal summer employees who will be used to supplement regular staff. The civil engineer position was funded for half a year in the current budget. The proposed budget includes funding for 12 months. The program clerk position at the senior center is proposed to be fully funded. Due to budget constraints last year, the position was only funded for half a year. The pension account has been increased because of the Retirement Board's decision to reduce the assumed rate of return on pension investments from 7% to 6.875%. The Retirement Board took this action after reviewing the actual investment returns over the past few years and the capital market forecast for the next 10 years. It is the Board's goal to phase in a reduction of the assumed rate of return over the next few years until it's at 6.5%. The reduction in the assumed rate of return will result in approximately an $156,000 increase in the contribution each year. The health insurance account has been reduced due to the very favorable renewal terms for our fiscal year 21-22. Claims paid have been significantly below expectations, and the increase in the cost of self-lost insurance premiums for next year is substantially less than the cost increases over the past few years. I've also separated the budget by objects, which include salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increase and decrease for each object are as follows: salaries increased 4.51%. Benefits increased 0.85%. Supplies decreased 2.84%. Equipment decreased 5.04%. Contractual increased 3.88%. And utilities increased 2.22%. The proposed total general fund appropriation is $32,317,083, which is a 2.99% increase above the current budget. The debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term debt. The total proposed amount for the next fiscal year is $8,272,347. This is a decrease of $565,102, or 6.39% less than the current year. Refugees collection. The refuge collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by town residents and the town landfill operations. This budget proposes a rate increase of $19. The annual fee will be $254 per household. Capital improvement. The proposed general fund appropriation to support the first year of the capital improvement plan is $3147,166, which equals 2.71% of the proposed general fund revenue for the next fiscal year. Last year, due to COVID-19 and financial uncertainties, the town significantly reduced capital expenditures. This CIP attempts to make up for the minimal capital budget in fiscal year 21. Shown is the complete Board of Education and Town capital project. Bonding and other funding summaries. The first year of the capital plan proposes bonding for the new Farmington High School building project. The Town Council set a net municipal project maximum of $110 million. This capital plan also includes $26,321,000 in projected state reimbursement for the new Farmington High School building project. It is anticipated that a June 2021 referendum will take place. There are two Board of Education bonding questions proposed for the April 29 budget referendum. The IAR middle school cafeteria addition renovation is proposed at the bond question for $1,284,000. A partial roof replacement at Noah Wallace School is proposed for a bond question at $450,000. The third bond question is a road reconstruction question for $2 million. Other funding. As just described, the capital plan includes $26,321,000 in anticipated state reimbursement for the Farmington High School building project. There is also $100,000 for Tungus Need Improvement, which is the State Forest Park, $150,000 for the Planning Department for the Farmington Center improvement, specifically to replace the west side of the sidewalk from Route 4 to Highland Park Market, and to replace the east side of the sidewalk from Route 4 to the main gate subdivision, which includes a segment of new sidewalk. $150,000 for Stonehouse renovation, and $25,000 for new center renovation. There is one reappropriation of $75,000 for a highway maintenance truck. Expenditure summary. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 21-2022 is $116,143, an increase of $4,166,280, or 3.72% above the current budget. The Board of Education account includes an appropriation of $72,288,934, an increase of 3.3% above the current year's budget. I will now call on Kathy Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to present the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. It's my pleasure to present the 2021-2022 Farmington Board of Education's budget to the community. The budget development process in Farmington is grounded in our strategic improvement documents each year, our mission, our vision of the global citizen, framework for teaching and learning, core beliefs, and equity framework. This alignment is critical because our financial plan must advance the implementation of these visionary core improvement documents, from initial school submissions to the refinement of our operating budget, to school and program reviews of all requests, zero-based budgeting practices reutilized. With our core improvement documents at the forefront of the development of this budget, here are the major messages of the 21-22 budget. The 21-22 budget maintains and advances academic excellence through innovative programming K-12, advances equity and social justice initiatives, programming, and resources, promotes innovative teaching and learning, reinstates some academic supply facility projects, programming, and technologies that were reduced in the 2020-2021 budget, contains cost through zero-based budgeting reductions and efficiency to maintain and advance current programming, supports students' academic and social emotional development, especially due to the impact of the pandemic, and maintains class drive levels in accordance with Board of Education policy with the support of S.R. II grant funding. This slide provides an overview of the Board of Education's operating budget for the 21-22 school year. The total budget request is $72,288,934. This is an increase of $2,312,353, which is a percent increase over the 2020-2021 budget of 3.3%. Here are the major budget drivers related to our 3.3% increase. In salaries, 1.62% of the 3.3% increase is due to negotiated contracts with fall associations. Benefits, 0.6% of the 3.3% increase is due to funding for self-insurance and related costs for catastrophic claims. In special services, 0.46%. The 3.3% increase reflects increased student needs due to unanticipated outbursts. Reinstatement of previous year's reductions, 0.36% of the 3.3% increase is due to facility projects, K-8 summer school, and technology that are being reinstated after being reduced in the 2020-2021 budget. Transportation, 0.22% of the 3.3% increase is due to our negotiated contractual increase for transportation. Other, 0.05% of the 3.3% increase for all other areas, including but not limited to equity enhancements and supplies across a range of subject areas and departments, for a total increase of 3.3% over the 2020-2021 budget. This slide shows the school district's commitment to excellence and fiscal responsibility. The rankings listed on this slide are statewide, including all school districts, with one spending the most and 166 spending released. It is important to note that Farmington ranks 103 in the most up-to-date per pupil expenditure reported by the Connecticut State Department of Education as compared to all other Connecticut school districts, which is $1,595 less per pupil than the state per pupil average. We continue to exhibit strong fiscal management in Connecticut, and when you compare us to like school districts across many indicators, including those listed on this slide. The first budget driver is the salaries account, or the 100 series. This series accounts for 65.65% of the total budget. The budget increase in salary line is 2.44% and reflects negotiated contractual obligations. All of the contractual salary increases are listed on this slide. The next budget driver is insurance, or the 200 series. With a 3.56% increase, this series accounts for 16.78% of the total budget. This account provides 100% of expected paid claims and the administration of employee health insurance. All associations have a high deductible HSA with co-insurance. Negotiated life insurance and long-term disability costs are highlighted on this slide. Services is the next budget driver, this 300 series. This series accounts for 14.29% of the total budget. There is a 7.26% increase in this series due to a significant increase in mandated special services tuition outbursts due to unanticipated and new student enrollment, technology-based operational systems increases, major facility projects, and K-8 summer schools that were both dramatically reduced in the 2020-2021 budget, and the negotiated contract for transportation The next series is supplies for the 400 series, which accounts for 2.53% of the total budget. The supply series reflects a negative 1.68% decrease. This account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions, but also provides for purchase of a wide-ranging group of items such as instructional health, custodial, computer, testing, supplies, text, and library books, and AAV computer materials. The 500 series, or the equipment series, reflects a larger increase of 32.89%. This series accounts for only 0.38% of the total budget. The major drivers of this increase are the restoration of funding, technology, and the addition of technology equipment related to a transition to a take-home one-to-one approach accelerated due to COVID-19. This represents a building-back approach. This account also provides for facility equipment. The district has prioritized all potential technology and facility purchases within this budget. Dues and fees of the 600 series shows an increase of 11.2% due to equity enhancements aligned to our equity framework with a partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools as well as the DM Group scheduling support. With a focus on efficient scheduling and excellence in programming within the membership account, this series accounts for only 0.36% of the total budget. This account also includes Town Farmington negotiated liability umbrella and motor vehicle Here is a view of the entire Board of Education's recommended operating budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. This slide provides an overview of the Board of Education's capital budget, including the bonding questions which Kathy Wannske, our Town Manager, reviewed, the total funding for capital cash projects for the The total funding for capital cash projects for the Board of Education within the 2021-2022 capital improvement budget is $1,487,166. In summary, the 2122 recommended budget advances educational excellence, equity, and innovative teaching and learning aligned to our vision of the global citizen. The budget is responsive to our students' needs, especially given the complexities that the pandemic has presented in the areas of academic progress and social emotional well-being, and reflects a reinstatement of critical summer school programming, facility projects, technology, and other areas that were reduced for one year in this 2020-2021 budget. In addition, SRT2 federal funding was utilized to reduce the budget request through the budget approval process with a focus on learning acceleration through reduction of class size, technology, and COVID-19-related expenses. The recommended budget addresses currently known requirements, new grant funding, as well as shifts in grant funding, and the reinstatement of vital programming projects. Given the many challenges that we have and will continue to face due to the pandemic, Farmington continues to lead the way in excellence in education and operations due to strong strategic planning that is supported by our annual financial plan, the Board of Education's budget. We have much to be proud of. Our faculty, staff, administrators, and families, along with all of you, our Board of Education and Town Council have joined together this school year to ensure our students were provided a world-class education during the global pandemic. We have done so because we approached this year with excellence by aligning all of our return-to-school plans to our core improvement documents with optimism by remaining steadfast in our beliefs about how students are best and how to best support students' social emotional well-being with a laser focus on the health of all members of our school district community. Our student and district outcomes, as well as our financial plan, the 2021-2022 budget reflects a value-added approach to strategic planning, improvement, and budget development, which is directly centered upon the needs of our students so that we fully prepare all students for the world that awaits them upon their graduation. I will now turn the presentation back over to Town Manager Kathy Von Syke. Thank you, Kathy. The grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a 0.60% increase. The personal property account shows a 0.82% increase. The motor vehicles account shows a 5.02% increase. In summary, the grand list increased by 0.90% or $33,254,381 for a total grand list Some areas to note: the real estate grew by 0.60%. Growth in this area is because of a stable economy in Farmington. Motor vehicles increased by 5.02%. Overall, we've seen an increase in the total value of cars in Farmington. This is primarily due to an increased value in used cars. Revenue. I've broken revenue down into nine categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, Westwood contribution, and CIP. In summary, projected non-tax revenues are $9,636,947 or a 1.61% increase over the current year. Some areas to note: license and permits are being budgeted with an expected increase. Building permit fees continue to be robust. Charges for services revenue is expected to increase due to the strong real estate market. The town clerk's office has been able to collect a significant amount of revenue from the advanced tax and recording fees. Proposed tax and mill rate. The general fund budget will require a property tax rate of $28.81 mil, an increase of 0.84 mil or a 2.99% tax increase. The average homeowner will see an additional $189.82 to their taxes. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,881 in taxes. Shown is the cost for the average homeowner with a house assessed at $226,777. The annual town meeting is April 19, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. at the Farmington High School auditorium. Members of the public will have the option of attending in person or virtually over Zoom. However, only those attending the meeting in person will be able to ask questions. The town-wide referendum is Thursday, April 29 at your usual home location. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Kathy. As this is a public hearing, we will now go to the public if there are any questions. Paul, were there any questions sent in?
There was no questions sent in.
No questions sent in. Anna, is there anyone in the public who would like to ask a question on this presentation?
There is no one raising their hand.
No one raising their hand.
Oh, I do have a hand raised.
Hold that too soon. We have one hand.
Sorry. So it's Tim Kelly.
Yes, Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Tim.
Great. I find it curious that we would have the IAR cafeteria project on the docket for this budget cycle. My understanding is the actual building rental work wouldn't be undertaken until a year from this summer, which would actually be the following fiscal year, meaning 2022, '23 versus the one we're planning for right now. We could stay on track by simply budgeting, I think, about 80K for the upfront architectural and engineering effort over the coming year, and then put the 1.2 million to vote next spring. More importantly, I think there are literally billions of federal dollars rolling downhill specifically aimed at school infrastructure programs. So maybe Farmington will not really need to bond and pay for this building project. Perhaps we would just be better off preparing to be shovel-ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anna, are there any other questions?
I don't see any other questions.
Okay, then we will be in opportunity momentarily for questions on any other topics. So if we have no other questions, we will close the public hearing at 7:37. Item E, new items, we have done. And we will go to item F, public comments on any other topic. Paul, do we have any written comments?
No written comments.
Also no written comment. Anna?
No hand raised.
I'm going to wait twice at last time.
Oh, okay. We do have hands.
Okay, we got one hand up.
And Pierre?
Pierre, you're on.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Thanks, all. This is Pierre Gertner from Ten Henley Commons here in Farmington. Realize that your focus over the last several weeks as a town council has been focused on the annual budget, and kudos for the work done. But I wanted to kind of shift and share a few thoughts related to the high school proposal, which will obviously follow, hopefully, to a referendum in June. And I guess I'm going to point out that, you know, it might be helpful if the town council would be able to focus significant attention to the high school proposal before April 30, either in scheduled or special meetings with a particular attention to the financing plan, burden to taxpayers, and an ability to articulate clearly why this plan should be supported. The process should consider the analysis and data necessary to mitigate the objections likely to be raised and to answer fair and objective questions from the taxpayers. Last time the high school went to referenda, months and months were spent on the design and estimated cost, and yet the financial planning and the analysis of the tax impact were limited to a mid-May meeting without the item even being a single item on the agenda, and then forced forward to a referenda just a few weeks later. So it's helpful if the town council could focus their energies on this in April rather than the more formal process in May to perhaps provide an opportunity for the town council to host townwide meetings in advance of the formal submittal to the town meeting to engage the community. In my view, the town council advancing a well-thought-out plan, demonstrating the steps they have taken to mitigate the tax burden, is much more likely to be successful than the business or the building committee meetings and presentations. Should the high school proposal go to referenda with a financing plan and tax burden essentially similar to the financial projections presented to the town council by the finance director in mid-February, I believe there's a reasonably high probability it will be rejected, and personally, my thoughts relative to the project would remain uncertain. Why? While the town council's appropriately separated the 1928 building from the high school proposal, the charge to the building committee was to make a determination on the high school. Yet the building committee expanded its proposal beyond the charge from the town council to provide offices for the superintendent and central office staff in a substantially remodeled 900 wing for $5.5 million. There's no question these professionals require appropriate office space, but the building committee has not provided any financial analysis to justify the use of the 900 wing versus alternatives. Also, in a COVID, post-COVID environment, if the 900 wing has remaining useful life, is it appropriate to dismantle all of the classroom space? In the last referendum, many voters were troubled by the cost to remodel the 1928 building for the education central office staff. Are we repeating history risking the high school project? The increase in taxes based on the February 21 projections are too high. On average, in years where all the bonds are outstanding, a taxpayer with the average-assessed home will see their annual taxes increase $460 related to just the high school. The mill rate will go up $2 per thousand. The tax impacts to the average-assessed home included in the building committee March newsletter and presentations are based on a narrow view of tax increases, which in my view are misleading. To suggest because tax increases diminish that the taxpayer isn't paying 460 more per year for 20 years is candidly disingenuous. The mid-February projections totally disregard any fidelity to the town's fiscal policies that debt service should not exceed 10% of the annual town budget. This is an important policy because it links our operating capital spend to ensure balance. It's also important in demonstrating financial prudence to bond rating agencies to main high credit status. The building committee has positioned a number of alternative scope items to add to the high school project should construction bids and performance be less than budget. I suggest that the town council establish a policy to save some of those cost benefits should they arise. Taxpayers, I believe, would appreciate such a policy as they consider their support, understanding that should favorable cost circumstances arise, the town council has considered their interest. As I've noted previously, the most effective tool to mitigate the annual tax burden is to lengthen the maturity of the bonds to 30 years. This is a long-lived project, and 30-year bonds in this interest rate environment are prudent. It also likely reduces the percentage of debt service to the total town budget to be within or near the 10% fiscal policy. In addition, the decision as to maturity is one of equity as well. Spreading the debt service over more years provides that many more and different taxpayers will share the tax burden for the high school. Another suggestion that may assist in the financial analysis is an opportunity to reduce what I'll call the net debt service. Farmington has recently spent 50-plus million to improve the wastewater treatment facility, yet I believe has not enacted any significant increase in sewer fees. All of the debt service for this improvement sits in the budget with no increased sewer revenues to help offset this burden. It seems illogical to make this type of improvement without increasing fees. As an example, a 10% increase would raise $500,000 annually to help offset the related debt service. While I understand this approach involves a shift from taxes to fees, it does a better job linking the real cost of that facility and infrastructure to those who use it, including differing burdens between residential, commercial, and users from neighboring towns. Thanks for your consideration, and I'm hopeful that we can present something that might appear to be more viable financially to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. Any other comments? Seeing none. On item G, Pierre.
I make a motion to approve the March 9, 2020-2021 regular town council meeting.
Motion second. Any discussion being done? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, you're none.
I make a motion to approve the March 10, 2020-2021 regular town council meeting with the budget. Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
Motion second. Any discussion being done? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, you're none.
I make a motion to approve the March 11, 2021 regular town council meeting budget. Second.
Motion second. Any comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, you're none.
I make a motion to approve the March 13, 2020-21 regular town council meeting budget. Second.
Motion second. Any comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, you're none. Item H, reading of communications and written appeals. Kathy?
You have two letters that we have written to our state legislators. I will say that on vote, the one, let me just try to find it. Mike Demico gave us a call just recently, and this was on the Act of Concerning the Replacement of Public Utility Calls, and he said there would be revisions based on some of the letters and responses that he received. So that was good news. And we haven't heard much about the other one, but we're going to keep on top of that tip. So as different laws have been proposed, we've been trying to follow them and writing different letters to keep on with our legislative group. So that's where we are.
Very good. Thank you. Item I, reports of our committees. First is land acquisition committee.
Nothing to report.
Next, Grayhamper's committee.
Yes, we met on March 2nd. We welcomed and we remember we invite you home. Two items of importance. They were discussed in their meetings. April 24th is the upcoming annual cleanup day, which is going to go forward with even our COVID environment. At this point in time, we, you know, there certainly are some restrictions in place, but I would encourage everybody to, you know, go to the website. There's marketing on the event on the website, and Sign Up Genius is now live for volunteers. The day of registration, gloves and bags will be held handed out at the Farmington Firehouse on Main Street, the library, Tungstous Ho's Firehouse, and Tungstous Need. So again, I would encourage everybody, that's a great event. We've run for years now, and April 24th is going to go forward again. So the other item, again, is I'll probably repeat multiple times, is working continuously on the sustainable CT goals and efforts, continually reviewing where we stand with regard to our checklist items. And at our last meeting, we allocated resources of the committee members to divide it up amongst works, work and tasks under various items on the spreadsheet. So we continue to move forward, hopefully satisfy our brand sponsorship or membership coming up. So we're continuing to work on sustainable CT, and again, I would encourage everybody to participate in the annual cleanup.
Great. Thank you. Now we'll go to the Farmington High School building bit.
Yes, we met. That was March 24th. Nothing terribly significant in terms of developments, other than we are now entering the phase of community engagement and outreach. And so the meetings, I would encourage everybody to go to the Farmington public, you know, the public high school website. You'll see a list of meetings in terms of just East Farms and Noah Walls have just, we completed those, and then a series of meetings throughout the month of April to hopefully engage the community and answer any questions and, you know, make presentations as to the project, engage our community members so they can fully understand the scope of the project. We are considering, as I think we will talk later about, additional tax relief issues in connection with the project. There's no major legislative updates relative to the building project itself, and the bidding environment relative to construction projects remains favorable at this point in time, even with the COVID restrictions. And we will be meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, and then I should have said, Green Committee will be meeting tomorrow night.
Great. Thank you. Now we go to the racially evolving dashboard.
Yes. Last week, we had our second in a series of events. It was a volume of healthcare. If you visit, you can go to the Town of Farmington Community Service and Facebook page to see it. Our next meet is April 12th, and right now we have a short little highlight reel of Latin suburbia, which we had last month.
Now we're going to hand up the video.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for attending our first of many community conversations sponsored by the Town of Farmington's Racial Equity Task Force. sponsored by the Town of Farmington's Racial Equity Task Force. Our author for the evening, Frederick Joseph, has graciously provided us with signed copies of his book entitled "The Black Friend on Being a Better White Person." And we're going to give a few of those out right now. Oh, we have Josie Peruta.
I'm happy to be here and excited that Farmington is doing this essential work. You know, "The Black Friend" is my latest book, and I'm very happy that people have been so receptive.
I'm so excited and honored to intro our moderator for this evening.
And I am super excited, a little nervous, to be talking with you guys today. And the partnership that this seminar, this webinar has been with, which is the RE Center. The RE Center, which stands for Race and Equity in Education, works to make transformative change towards racially just schools and communities.
Decades of denied access really did lay the foundation for this housing segregation that exists in many communities right to this day.
From Emmett Till to Breonna Taylor and everything in between. And it's not just about the brazen acts that happen. It's about the daily microaggressions and buildup of racism. We've seen an uptake in people trying to be better about race, better about anti-racism, you know, quote-unquote, better allies. But what does it mean to be an ally, right? It's such a broad term. It's such a broad idea. And oftentimes, people are just jumping into it so that no one can call them out for not doing something.
We see a lot of the times in white suburbs, the quotes, "We don't see color and all lives matter."
So "all lives matter" is not a fictitious statement, but it becomes fictitious if you can't accept that black lives matter. Because how can all lives matter if black lives don't matter? Black people are a part of the all. And so this statement cannot be true if the other one is not true. And that's why people do it. Because for me to tell a woman, hey, I don't see you as a woman, that means that I don't want to accept that I benefit from the patriarchy, right? Imagine being in a box and then being in a box and then having that box thrown into the ocean, right? You're told that you don't matter. You're told that your experiences are invalid. You're being gaslit on the regular, right? And it's not just people who live in suburbia and are black. It's black people in any space that's white, the corporate setting, higher education, you know, every space that is predominantly white. When black people are meant to feel as if they are either lying or exaggerating their experiences, or their experiences simply don't exist. You know, it's one of the greatest traumas a person can ever deal with in their entire life.
What are some action steps that they can do to start validating their black students, their black peers, their, the black people that they work with?
First steps is making sure that you don't tokenize black people, right? Unpack and assess your own privilege, right? Before you try to figure out what you can do to help people. I've done it, right? Like, what are my privileges in which I have over this community so I can see where I can use those privileges as a resource for the community that doesn't have those privileges?
What are some actions that our community can take towards making that systemic change?
I think that our community needs to lean into the anti-racism work as well. We are as conditioned in white supremacy and racism systemically as our white counterparts oftentimes. I think a lot of black people also need to do the work of learning our history and the current moment of oppression that we are in and why we need to all be in community and solidarity as it relates to the steps of anti-racism. And I think people oftentimes forget it. Not everyone is Mercy and not everyone is Frederick, right? And some people are caught up in feeling the comfortability of their family, the comfortability of their local community. And we need to understand that even if you, as an individual person who is black, a person who is Latinx, a person who is AAPI, a person who is Indigenous, even if you are comfortable, we have to look at the actual communities at large and understand that there's so much work to do. We need to lean hard into it and be unpacking, unlearning, and ready to fight as well.
Advice would you give to black kids, and not just black kids, but like, black activists? Leaving high school, going on into higher education, going into the world, what advice would you give to them?
Do the complete opposite of what I did. Anywhere that there was a protest, you could find me. Anywhere that somebody was fighting against racism, fighting against anything, I'm there. But I was exhausted, and I had to take time to rest. And I, because I wasn't taking time for decades. You need, you need to absolutely find time for healing work. So that's, that's my suggestion. Find time for happiness. Find time for rhythm.
That's a wrap.
Thank you, everybody.
With that, we will move on to the reports of our council chair and liaisons. And that presentation rolls very nicely into the first topic. We just heard comments of reaching out to the community at large. And as part of that, we have seen a national increase against the AAPI, Asian American and Pacific Islander population nationwide. So we've begun an outreach in our community. Excuse me. We'll begin a dialogue discussing the concerns and issues both in Farmington and outside. And the hope is that this conversation will strengthen and bring our community together. So I'd just like to reach out also to anyone watching. If you have any interest in participating in this discussion, you can email or call the town manager's office. The office phone number is 860-675-2350. So please, we're looking for participation. We are reaching out, but we'd like to hear from the listening audience right now. Also, in our town, we've been talking about code for some time now. Vaccines have continued to do well in Farmington. As of April 1st, we have had 46.24% of our population receive their first dose of the vaccination. The state of Connecticut has 33.35. So excellent job. We are getting people out there. We are getting people vaccinated. We are getting closer to that herd immunity within town. Just a few statistics here. Of the 169 towns in Connecticut, Farmington is one of only 22 to have over 46% having received that first shot. Of those 22 towns, only one has a population of over 25,000. That town is Farmington. So again, good job. Keep it up. We've got to keep moving forward on this. As you have more opportunities to spend time outside, please continue to do what you have been doing. Wear your mask, social distancing. That is what will get us where we need to be on the pandemic. We do not want to open the door to another wave of COVID. And as Chris mentioned earlier, if you're going to be outside, April 24th is a great time to participate in the townwide cleanup. We're not going to be in large groups this year, but don't feel like you have to wait till April 24th. You can grab a bag and pick up trash any day of the week. So thank you for that. Also, I'd like to mention, we have a number of open positions in the town. Volunteer opportunities on boards, committees, and commissions. We have a position on our bicycle advisory committee. Conservation and inland wetlands. Housing Authority, Human Relations Commission. The Plainville Area Cable TV Authority Advisory Board, excuse me, to Green Efforts Committee. And the Veterans Memorial Committee are all looking for more volunteers. So if you have an interest, you can, again, either email, contact us through the website, or also call that same town manager's number, which again, 860-675-2350. And one other thing, when we were talking about the high school building committee, Chris made reference to meetings that are being held regarding that. And there are, I think, about 20-some meetings that are being held. If you would like to find out when and where they are being held, you can go to the high school building website, which is www.fhsbuildingproject.org. And you can get the information on schedule and a number of other bits of information there. So that is all for the chair report. I will now go on to the Board of Education Liaison.
Thank you, CJ. The Board of Education met on March 22nd. And the significant item from the meeting was the consideration of the East Farms kindergarten enrollment and construction process. Alicia Bowman presented a statement of these surrounding the East Farms, the enrollment instructions and significant renovations that will be undertaken. The board considered essentially the four options. Do-nothing approach, moving the kindergarten to Noel Wallace, sort of a hybrid with some streets going to Noel Wallace and some not. And then sort of wait-and-see approach, utilizing IAR as a swing space. The board engaged in a very lengthy discussion on this issue and topic, considering safety programmatic issues, families with multiple children, and the impact on Noel Wallace School itself. Ultimately, the board voted to support a decision that would move east kindergarten from East Farms to Noel Wallace for the year. So that was the final decision on that issue. COVID update for the Board of Education. All schools are full in person, with about 31% of the school population in cohort C, which is remote only. SR2 funds, which we discussed during the budgeting process, have now been totally expended. And the board is awaiting details on the American Rescue Plan funding. Just some smaller items of retirements. There was a handful, but, you know, the important takeaway from there is most of the retirements involve individuals who've been part of the community and the district for, you know, 15-plus up to 32 years. So it's a nice compliment to the longevity of a lot of our teachers and administrators. Budget issues were discussed. They reviewed the budget, and as we heard tonight, that was approved. The, usually, the Board of Education is experiencing the usual stressors related to COVID in terms of supplies, decreased cafeteria, Excel, and continuing education with decrease in enrollment, but they continue to monitor those situations. And that's about it. And there's, next meeting will be tomorrow evening.
Economic development.
Thank you, CJ. The EDC met on March 10th. The town planner, Catherine Kramer, gave a presentation to the commission regarding the town's affordable housing plan. And the next meeting is scheduled for April 14 at 5:30 p.m.
Great. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you, CJ. The last meeting of the Farmington Historic District Commission was canceled, but our next meeting will be held on April 20 at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you. For housing authority.
Nothing to report on.
Human Relations Committee.
Their next meeting is April 17th.
Good. And the library board.
And nothing to report on.
Town planning zoning liaison.
TTC. They have their next meeting April 12th, where the public meeting is continued for the development of 402 Farmington Avenue.
Unionville Historic Improvement Association liaison.
Nothing to report. I think you skipped over one.
I did. Unionville Historic District Commission.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you, CJ. Unionville Historic District Commission met on April 1st. The commission held their second spring educational workshop that featured a presentation from Sanford and Holly, the oldest business in Farmington. Sanford and Holly staff presented a history of the company. It was a very interesting presentation with many pictures on how the building looked in its early days. There were pictures of horse ground carriages on a much narrower West Avon Road coming to the business. And there was also pictures of the building during the Great Plugs, 1955. The second portion of their presentation focused on various materials, windows and doors that can be used to restore historic homes. And the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 6 at 7:00 p.m.
How high up in the building was the water?
It looked like it was about the, towards the second level, pretty high. Yeah.
You can still see the stretch on some of the power poles up and down Farmington Avenue, showing how high the water level was. WPTA.
Nothing to report.
And our other liaison. Brian, Chris? Brian?
Thank you. Thank you, CJ. Yes, along with Chris Fagan, I am on the subcommittee to take a look at tax surveillance and deferments and tax credits here in town. And we have heard from you folks who are concerned that, you know, the possibility of having a school built and the tax would be, that would be associated with that might be a burden on some citizens in Farmington who are elderly and have fixed income. So we did take that into serious discussion in our little subcommittee. And what we wanted to do was, you know, we've heard your concerns, and there are a number of options for folks who are in that situation. There are state tax credits. There are Farmington Town tax credits. There are tax freezes that have been used. And also, there's additional exemption for veterans, unencumbered, and for mainly for benefits for older veterans and their survivors. What we had hoped to accomplish was to make it easier to qualify for Farmington Town tax credits and to increase the tax credit for those who need it. So what Chris and I, along with the rest of our committee, are looking at are an increase to the tax town credit. We're also hoping to increase the eligibility for taxing, for the tax income bracket to go up to $57,000 approximately. And that would be something that we would present to the town council for discussion, and we would open for public comment. Also, this would probably begin possibly next year before, you know, school begins to even have an impact on your taxes. So that would be a definite benefit. So that's what we will be presenting probably at our next town council meeting, but we just wanted to give you a little heads up as to what we've been working on. Is there anything that you would like to add to that, Chris?
The only thing I would add, Brian, I think, is we discussed Steve Hoffman presented last night with fire, volunteer fires. And that there was an additional program there that Steve gave us a presentation of, and that will always be presented.
Yes, for volunteers to live for. Thank you.
Thank you both. More to come on that issue. Now we'll go to item K. The report to the town manager.
We have the written report in front of you. I did want to mention, CJ and I went to a press conference at Patterson Park. And we, it looks like we have some really good news. It's that Farmington, along with our neighboring officials, are working to restore Patterson Park with a $7 million bond request to the state. On March 24th, Speaker Ritter announced the goal to have the request approved by the State Bond Commission before the General Assembly adjourns to session. So he, Speaker Ritter, feels very confident that he'll be able to secure the necessary funds. There is a new Patterson Park committee that has members of the City of Hartford, members of New Britain, and they are going to be looking for members from Farmington to be on this committee. So this has been something that the City of Hartford has been looking at for quite some time, but it really was very expensive to start restoring it. And it does look like we're hopeful that Speaker Ritter will be able to secure the $7 million bonding fund for the City of Hartford, and they can start restoring Patterson Park. So CJ, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, the great day, a little overcast, but it was nice to see a crowd, actually, at Patterson Park. It's been a long time. And the fact that New Britain and Hartford both are looking to partner on a long-term basis to not just spend the money for improvements, to upkeep property. I think that's important.
Great. And then we just, we were announced recently that Farmington is one of the best places to live in the United States. And this year, Farmington was given an A-plus overall grade, as well as an A-plus for a public school grade. So we were ranked fifth in the best place to live in the Hartford area. So I just wanted to mention that, too. And that's it for my report.
And the second part, we, of course, all knew, this is one of the best places to live. But nice to have that confirmed by outsiders. Okay, now we will go to item L.
Hold on. I make a motion to approve the town manager's report.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion other than I tried to gloss over that? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, you know. Thank you. Now, item.
Agenda item L7. I make a motion that Jay Tulen be appointed to the land acquisition committee for an indefinite term.
Second.
And I'll just add a little background on Jay, since we've been making that a new theme of ours. The land acquisition committee always has at least two members of the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission unanimously voted to recommend Jay's appointment to the land acquisition committee to fill the vacancy of Guy Wolf.
Jay's appointment to the land acquisition committee to fill the vacancy of Guy Wolf. Jay has served on the conservation commission for two years. He began his work as an alternate and then became a full committee member. And Jay has followed and attended many meeting, meetings regarding land acquisitions made by the town in the past and is very knowledgeable about the process.
And I'm sure Jay is following this meeting as well. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Do we have any other appointments? No other appointments? We will now move on to old business. Seeing none, we move right on to item N, new business.
Agenda item N one. I make a motion to approve the town council's recommended budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Motion in a second, Kathy.
You have the tax and budget worksheet, which is attached in the budget document. So this would be approving, uh, the budget. So this would then turn to the town council's recommended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
All those long hours, now we will clarify that if we approve right now, it may miss our official recommended budget.
Your budget.
Any comments or questions? I'll add one. I think, uh, you know, we did a lot of good work, uh, over the time we were looking at this budget. Uh, we had set a goal of below three percent. We did come in at that. That, uh, added with last year, zero percent of the two-year average of less than one and a half percent. Uh, I think it's at least twenty, twenty years since that's happened in this town. Uh, and our three percent target is something we looked at for long-term planning, particularly when we're talking about things like the Farmington High School Building Project. We want to keep what we said we would do in the long term. So with that, uh, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice job.
Agenda item N two. I make a motion to forward the attached resolutions one through nine to the annual town meeting with a recommendation that they be approved. Second.
Yeah, motion in a second, Kathy.
These are your standard resolutions that you're approving the annual, uh, that item one will be the annual town report, that is your budget. The second town meeting is needed. And then you have your, uh, three bonding questions, the Irving A. Robbins, middle schools, Noah Wallace, and road repairs. Um, and then also, yes, your listing time for, um, times and voting and the wording on the ballot. So that's what all the backup is and some of the age of some riders, whatnot it.
With motion in a second, any comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item ten three. I make a motion to award a, to award a contract to Silicon, Connecticut Inc. to supply in place by two, by two units material on town roads for twenty twenty-one paving season at a cost not to exceed one million four hundred thousand dollars. Second.
We have a motion in a second, Kathy.
This is a motion, um, to contract with a vendor to supply materials for our, uh, twenty twenty-one street paving program. Uh, funds for this work in the amount of one point eight million are available on the capital budget. The amount of one point four is an estimate of the amount of paving work that will be undertaken during this year's paving season. And this, uh, contract will be under, uh, a state contract bid.
Sweet. And what type of materials was?
By two minutes, right?
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N four. I make a motion that the firm of Pullman and Conley LLC be appointed as bond counsel for a term effective immediately until January twenty twenty-two. Second.
Got a motion in a second, Kathy.
Um, staff has recently learned that three of the attorneys at the firm of Dave Pitney, um, the town's current bond counsel are no longer with the firm. One of the attorneys retired and the other two left Dave Pitney LLC and are now with Pullman and Conley. The two attorneys now, um, have worked closely with the town staff on several public finance projects, most notably the high school project and the IRS audit of the two thousand and eleven bond issue and refinancing. Staff feels that it's important to have the legal, um, have legal continue, uh, to have the same people for both projects. Therefore, we'd like to retain the services of our attorneys who are now at Pullman and, and to achieve this goal, the firm would need to be appointed as the bond counsel. So we're just moving with the attorneys.
Orland for Conley.
Yes.
Any comments or questions? Brian?
Just one. I'm just curious to know if, uh, they are honoring, uh, the cost of when they were brought on, or at the same rate, or is there change in the rate, or?
Joe, can you speak to that?
Yes, um, it'll be, if there is similar rates, that the, the firm, uh, Pullman and Conley charges, uh, their fee structure, not their fee structure, their, their structure for charging is different than what Dave Pitney did. So Pullman and Conley is more upfront, their fees, as they do things the way like the norm, not like you, your town attorney would, where they will, they'll bill you, uh, based on billable hours. Whereas, uh, with, uh, as Pullman and Conley is a similar way, they'll bill you for billable hours. Whereas Dave Pitney was more, they would face theirs on when you did a bond issue. They would face, keep a file. And once you did a bond issue, they would charge you for everything they did for you leading up to that bond issue. So it'll net out in the end to be.
About the same, so that that was based kind of on the bond cost?
Right.
To some respect? Is it similar in that respect, or is it basically an hourly fee for?
Pullman and Conley is more of an hourly fee.
And it's going to work out to our advantage that way?
Um, depends how much we use them. You know, it, it really boils down to if you use your attorney a lot, the more billable hours, they charge you more. So, um, whereas, uh, Dave Pitney was more of a set fee. They were saying to you, you know, for every million dollars we, a bond you issue, you, you're going to be charged X number of dollars.
Right.
So it.
All right. I was curious.
With the estimate, um, in looking at the fees for Pullman and Conley, looking at the fees that we were paying Dave Pitney, we feel it'll come out very close.
All right. I was just very curious, but thank you. Any other? Okay. And a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N five. To approve the following historic restoration fund resolution.
Okay. Motion in a second, Kathy.
Uh, the town is working with the Unionville Museum to apply for a historic restoration fund grant. We expect to apply the four between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars. Fund will be combined with a previously budgeted capital allocation of twenty-five thousand and fundraising by the museum. The Unionville Museum will be constructing a small addition to the building that will include a new handicap accessible bathroom, galley, kitchen, and storage area, which will allow us to better serve museum guests and host more comfortable and unique gatherings for all ages. So this is, um, this resolution is allowing the town to, um, submit a grant application.
So this is allowing us to ask someone else to help us pay for some?
Exactly.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N six. To approve the following Americans with Disabilities Act policy ingredients procedure ADA. Second.
A motion in a second, Kathy.
Just that, if you've probably noticed in your packet, agenda item N six and ten, equal fair housing funds. And so we have a bunch of resolutions that we have to update every year. None of the resolutions have any change to them, but we have to buy, um, all our grants. We have to approve them every year. So we're able to do that. So the first one is to approve the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Great. So no changes, just approved last year.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N seven. To adopt the following fair housing resolution for the town of Farmington and to authorize the town manager to, to sign and distribute said resolution. Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments, Kathy?
No.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N eight. To adopt, to adapt, uh, the Farmington Equal Employment Opportunity Program and Affirmative Action Plan for the town of Farmington. Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I gotta catch up.
Eight?
Around nine?
Uh, eight.
Eight. We just did it.
Nine.
I thought we did it.
Yeah, around nine. Very sweet.
Number?
Agenda item N nine. To adopt the following compliance with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, statement for the town of Farmington and to authorize the town manager to sign and distribute said resolution. Second.
And a motion in a second. Any comments?
I have one. My, our numbers are off. That's why I told you we're on nine. Uh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
N ten, CJ.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adopt the following fair housing policy statement for the town of Farmington and to authorize the town manager to sign and distribute, distribute said resolution.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions coming? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N eleven. To approve the following property tax refunds as listed below. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions on tax refunds? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Before we move into executive session, which we will be motion in a moment, I will leave you with an old proverb. That proverb says, budgeting is not a shackles of spending limits, but a reminder of what is important to you. Who's that, Peter?
I make a motion, agenda item O one, uh, to discuss matters, uh, concerning collective bargaining and executive session. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously for the public. We are. Peter, do you have a question on that? Town manager, the members of the county.
Members of the town council and the town manager.
Thank you. And for those watching outside, this basically ends our meeting. We will be gone offline for our executive session. And, uh, we thank you for joining us tonight. I mean, I'm going back again.